I'd like to call this meeting to order the Sutter County Board of Supervisors. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board during the board's consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak on an item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card noting the number of the agenda item about which you wish to speak and present it to the board clerks. And if you wish to speak about more than one agenda item, please fill out a separate speaker card for each item you wish to speak under. And under public comment, please fill out a speaker card for that with noting public comment. When the matter comes before and is announced, please approach the roster in the back and the chair will recognize you. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Here.
Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Conant?
Uh, present. And we will have an invocation by Steve Flack for the Bridge Church, and Zach Hamill will lead us in the salute of the flag, please.
Father, we thank you for today. I give honor to the men that are here before us today. Your word tells us to give honor where honor is due, and with honor also comes responsibility. So, Father, in this meeting today, we just ask for your wisdom to be poured out. Lord, as these men who have been placed in civil authority over us have to make decisions in the best interests of all of our community. So, Father, we just ask for wisdom to be poured out. We ask for unity, Lord, as best it can be, and we ask for respect to be poured out as concerned citizens share what they believe is important to them. So, we just thank you for this opportunity. I thank you as an associate pastor of the Bridge to be here today to open this session of the meeting, and we just simply say, help. We need your help to make decisions with resources, to open doors that need to be opened. We thank you for this community. We thank you for the first responders, doctors, and police officers that are watching over us. So, I just simply say, help. Help, help, help. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Praise the Lord to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move on, Steve sent out an email the other day that Zach Hamill was awarded. Can you go over that real quick, because I couldn't find it now?
Actually, yeah, thank you to the chair. I was going to bring this up at a future meeting so we could do a write-up of it. I think I sent it in my... Sorry, and let me look. I have the details here.
Throw them under the bus.
Okay. So, Zach, I'll read what was in the weekly update. Zach Hamill received the Gold Award from the California Emergency Services Association for his contribution to improving emergency management in California. Having experienced the 2017 Sonoma County fires firsthand, he served as the liaison to the Town of Paradise for the Cal Fire Incident Command Team during the Camp Fire of 2018. He helped the devastated town establish an emergency operations center in Chico, staffed with mutual aid support, allowing town staff the necessary time to regroup, recover, and receive training to embrace the grim work ahead. He is also recognized for his leadership within the California Emergency Services Association.
Let's give Zach a hand, please. Fantastic job to be represented by the state. Okay, we will now do two presentations.
For meeting in front.
Well, Michelle Blake, Executive Director, Sutter County Children's and Family Commission, please join the board up front for a presentation of a plaque to Michelle Blake, Executive Director with the Children's, Sutter County Children's and Family Commission in recognition of her outstanding achievements.
Michelle Blake, Director of Education upon the completion of her education at...
High school? I did it!
Okay. I thought I had the wrong one here. Michelle embarked on a journey to San Diego State where she earned her bachelor's degree. Returning to her roots after graduation, she initiated her professional journey at Sutter County while working. Michelle made the dedication to further her academic pursuits, obtaining a master's degree from Chico State, then embarking on the joys of starting a family. With dedication spanning over two decades in service from Sutter County and extensive record of community involvement, Michelle made the bold decision to further her education. She enrolled at USC Roster School of Education where she earned her doctorate in education in specializing in organizations of changing leadership. Thank you. I thought it was something else. What were you done for it, Dan? So, this is an award for Michelle.
Wow. Thank you.
Michelle.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone. You know, it's so much easier when I talk about Sutter County Children and Families Commission, because that comes from the heart. When I have to talk about myself, it's a little more awkward. So, but nonetheless, I wanted to thank this dude right over here, Mr. Ziegemeyer, our supervisor, but also chairman of our commission, and it's because of individuals like Mike, Supervisor Ziegemeyer, and then this young woman over here, Sarah, who serves as another one of my mentors and bosses. But nonetheless, I have to bring up my parents, Ray and Diane Bull. Could you come on up? Come on up. I would love that. And I have to mention my team. I have two of my team members here, that's Julie Price and Pam Bossy, and of course, my partner in life, Derek Watkins. If I could bring you all up here, just because this isn't just on me, I would have never been able to endure these last few years if it wasn't for your support and your love and, well, money, time, everything else, especially Dad here. So, thank you. I appreciate this plaque very much. I'm used to getting paper things. Thank you. Thank you.
Great job.
Will Neil Hay, Director of Development Services, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week.
Okay. Last one here. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, important to the stability and resilience community, to the public, health, high quality of life, well-being of the people of Sutter County. These services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees, that of all levels of the government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. Sutter County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of May 19th to the 25th as National Public Works Week in the county of Sutter, and calls upon all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and recognize the substantial contribution they make in protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Neil.
Thank you. Well, I think on behalf of myself and Ken Schra, the General Services Director, we both maintain and look after the county's public works facilities, whether it's facilities, buildings, roads, bridges, drainage systems, and we have a dedicated staff of personnel, both in the office and in the field, that are looking out and trying to do the best they can with the resources available in order to maintain the infrastructure. You know, the county's been here since 1847, so there's some of the infrastructure that's actually that old, and we do the best we can hopefully to provide a system that works and is in just a continual state of repair and improvement for all of our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within its subject-mannered jurisdiction of the board supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the post-agenda. Do we have any speaker cards for public comment?
Yes, Chairman, we have four public comment speaker cards.
Okay.
Tina Hessong is public speaker number one.
Hi, I'm Tina Hessong. I'm with New California State. A crucial election in our nation's history is quickly approaching, and Sutter County's previous elections are still in question. Even the most recent election, the March 2024 primary, is in question, and the members of this board certified the results on April 9th, 2024. Let's look at the simple yes-no vote on Prop 1. Newsom was on the news asking for help to find more yes votes. Did this county assist him? The certified totals read that 20,811 people voted in the primary. The yes votes were 6,455. The no votes were 13,119, for a total of 19,574. Now, let's all get out our calculators. 20,811 minus 19,574, and we have 1,237 unaccounted-for votes in this county that were certified by this board. Did the 1,237 Sutter County votes voters forget to or did not bother to cast a yes-no vote for the important statewide Prop 1 election, but vote on everything else on the ballot? That is the only way to arrive at the 19,574 total. Why wouldn't they have voted on Prop 1? Did the members of this board even look at the numbers before certifying the results? The simple remedy to this issue is a hand recount of the March 2024 yes or no vote on Prop 1. 1,237 votes are unaccounted-for, and we, the people, are respectfully requesting that this board give access to all the ballots and allow a volunteer-led hand recount. Whatever the results of the hand recount are, will put this issue to bed and give the people of Sutter County the assurance and confidence in your voting system. I would like you to schedule a hand recount within the next two weeks. I have a group of volunteers ready to assist, and I am expecting an immediate response to this request. I will be sending my contact information to each of your emails. Additionally, I am inviting you to hear Professor David Clements, an expert in election fraud at Gran Zella's in Williams, this Friday at 6:30 PM. Just one more question. Did you even check the math before certifying the inaccurate results? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Our next public speaker is Tony Farley.
I'm Farley, South Sutter County, South East City. There's Pete Daley, the 4011 U.C. Fire Chief. Welcome aboard, Sutter County new Fire Chief. I appreciate it. Thank you for your service. He's the 4011 U.C. Fire Chief. I know him on media. And here Nicholas is back, Italian guy with the cash collection. I like that. There's Karen Baines wearing his green turtleneck. I like that. There's Matt Conan. There's the Star Wars guy. Hey, Wonder Woman will destroy Star Wars. Wonder Woman will defeat Star Wars. There's Mike Ziegler over there. There's the lawyer from Glen County, the Harvard lawyer, Steve Smith, the good CO. There is the baddest sheriff in the world. There's the Marine Corps Colonel, and there is the female deputy, Katie Parker, not Perry Parker. And there is Zachary Hamble. He is a good civil defense director from the Cold War against the Russians. And there is Liz Cervantes. I want to look at that. That's a little sign. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service, Sarah. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Our next public comment is from Deborah Torres.
Hello. This is probably my first time speaking here to all of you. I have lived in this community for probably the last 40-something years and have observed some of the supervisor meetings from afar off. Although, working in the community, a lot of people, we talk amongst ourselves. We have a feeling that we are not being represented in these meetings, because they're at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, where many of the people that work for the county are able to come frequently and be a part of it and exclude us. We feel that that's disrespectful to our community, just as it was with our Measure A in taxing us, when you would spend our tax funding money, I don't know, maybe what, half a million dollars to tax us? It failed. Why did it fail? And I'm sorry, but when people go uptown and can't afford groceries, they can't afford gas, when we are the highest taxed state in America, and we have a board of supervisors that pass for Steve Smith to have a raise, I'm sorry, but that just doesn't feel respectful to our community. There's that old saying that says you can't squeeze blood out of a tournament, turnip. Well, you can't give what you don't have, sir. We aren't feeling like you're hearing us. This isn't about a Liz or this or that, or all of us disagree with each other or agreeing. The community needs to be more of a part of what's happening here in these walls, and we're not feeling it. We want to feel more represented by our supervisors in being balanced and fair, talking to us as community members on how we feel about the issues that are being pushed through. Our government has been weaponized against us. Let's not do that here in our county, because it really feels like that's what's happening with the fear mongering, all the things that went with the Tax A. It was horrible. It was horrible. It was embarrassing. We can work together. Just let us know, and we will come forward and talk with you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Our last public comment card is from Liz Cervantes.
Gee, Liz, I didn't think I was going to be able to squeeze into, out of that chair. Hello, boys. It's been a while, huh? Bet you thought I was just out taking care of my tomatoes, but I'm not. I'm here because there's been a couple of things that have grabbed my attention. I'm Liz Cervantes, District 5, Lifetime Community. Thank God somebody else said it besides me. This meeting time is for the birds. But you know what? I figured something out today, and all the time I've been coming to these meetings, I thought it was by design to keep your public out, because you didn't want the public to know what you were doing. Found out today it's not just the citizens. You've got some disgruntled employees that can't make your meeting. Is that part of the plan? Just wondering. I'm glad Mrs. Torres brought up Measure A. I had darn near forgot about that. How are we doing on our next tax, right? We came out with Measure A in August, and the vote was in November. Didn't give us much time, but I do embrace, I'm not trying to be divisive or weaponized, but like Mrs. Torres said, we're broke. We can't afford it, and I look forward to fighting you and the city. I would like to say that I'm very proud that all five of you are here today. Mr. McKelley, the CAO, will tell you that I have asked numerous times about your well-being, and I'm very happy you're here. Dan, you missed the next meeting, but since we're big on presentations, only two today. I have my own presentation, and this goes back to two weeks ago at the meeting last Tuesday, where the salary increase for our celebrity CAO just went up. Three unanimous votes, just like that. Now, this isn't for any of you. This is mine, okay? And I intend on bringing this little gem out around election time, because...
Yeah, I see it.
What a waste of time that just said by a former supervisor. He's lucky he's not still on this board. I'd love to play with him, too. Can we please reconsider the meeting time, please? I know it's tired, and you don't want to hear about it. My time's up.
Thank you, Liz. Moving on, the calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or prior policy direction have been given to the staff and only require routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience that the matter may be adopted by one total motion. However, the board may, at its option or upon the request of member of the public, consider any matter separately. Consent calendar is items 1 through 11.
To the chair.
Yes.
Move to approve.
No motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 12.
Public hearing to consider an appeal of Project U22-0044-Bopari, an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of an administrative permit to allow a small outdoor special event facility in the agricultural zoning district for private employee appreciation events, small weddings, birthday parties, and similar events attended by up to 99 guests per event. This project proposes to use a plus or minus 1.5-acre outdoor area of a 144.17-acre parcel with the remainder of the parcel to continue use as an almond orchard. Events will be limited to 12 per year and will take place Friday through Sunday between the hours of 12:00 PM and 10:00 PM, located at 3102 Michael Road, Nicholas, California.
You're going to present today?
Yes.
Okay. Arwin?
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. Ravina Saroya, Assistant Planner with the Development Services Department. This item is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the administrative permit to allow a small outdoor special event facility within the agricultural zoning district. The project site is located approximately a half mile south of the rural community of East Nicholas Trowbridge. The project site has frontage along Michael Road to the west, Markham Road to the north, and State Highway 70 to the east. The site is zoned agriculture and surrounded by ag zoning on all four sides. It is designated as Ag 80 in the general plan. The proposed special event facility will occupy an outdoor area of approximately 1.5 acres on the larger 144.17-acre parcel. The property also contains agriculture accessory structures, which are adjacent to the event facility, but are not proposed for use in relation to the facility. The 1.5-acre area does not include any of the building's square footage. The remainder of the 144-acre parcel is proposed to continue operating as an almond orchard. The applicant is proposing to host private employee appreciation events, small weddings, birthday parties, and similar events at this facility. Under an administrative permit, the event facility is limited to a maximum of 99 guests per event, and a maximum of 12 events per calendar year is proposed by the applicant, and events are proposed to take place Friday through Sunday between the hours of 12:00 PM and 10:00 PM. The primary access to the event facility is located through a gated driveway along Michael Road, and a secondary driveway just south of that on Michael Road provides access to additional parking spaces. A total of 45 off-street parking spaces are proposed, which is the minimum required per county zoning code. The project was evaluated for consistency with the county zoning code, and conditions of approval were included to ensure compliance with county requirements. An initial study was also completed in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. The project was brought before the Sutter County Planning Commission on April 17th, 2024, and was approved with a four-to-one vote. On April 29th, 2024, the Development Services Department received an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the administrative permit. Following public noticing of the project, five letters of opposition were provided from members of the public, and a letter was also provided from the Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau in support of the appeal. The primary concerns brought up in the letters were increased traffic, impacts to county roads, limited emergency services, and concerns about response times, and impacts to agricultural operations in the area. The project includes conditions of approval to address these concerns, which include the applicant providing a traffic control plan prior to holding an event on the facility to ensure orderly and safe arrival and departure of vehicles from the site, and placement of temporary directional signs into the entrances to the facility. Traffic conditions were evaluated in the environmental review process, and the increase in traffic from the proposed facility was not expected to exceed the threshold of significance to require additional mitigation. Event facility traffic is also not expected to impact the level of service of Michael Road or Markham Road. Potential impacts to agricultural operations were evaluated through the environmental review initial study, and the project was determined to have a less-than-significant impact. The proposal does not include the conversion of agricultural land to a non-agricultural use, as no orchard trees are proposed to be removed as a result of this project. The project is also consistent with general plan goal AG5 to promote visitor services and attractions, and general plan policy AG5.5 to allow special events in agricultural areas. Staff is recommending that the board deny the appeal and approve this project with the findings listed in the staff report and conditions of approval attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
So, let's move on with our... We have a letter, right, opposing the project from the Farm Bureau? Open a public hearing?
Yes, we have seven speaker cards for this item, and then we do have a letter in support of the appeal from the Farm Bureau.
Okay. Well, why don't we start with the letter first?
Absolutely.
And then we'll move on to any speakers in favor of the project, and then we'll do the opposition followed by that.
This letter is submitted by the Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau in support of the appeal scheduled to be heard by the board on May 28th, 2024, with respect to the above-referenced project. Farm Bureau respectfully requests that the board grant the appeal... Farm Bureau respectfully requests that the board grant the appeal and return the project to the planning staff and Planning Commission for reconsideration in a manner consistent with the concerns articulated below. Farm Bureau is a membership organization that works to promote and protect agriculture throughout both Yuba and Sutter Counties. Farm Bureau works to protect and improve the ability of farmers and ranchers to provide a reliable supply of food and fiber through responsible stewardship of California's resources. Farm Bureau appreciates Sutter County's long history of leadership in the protection of agriculture as a primary economy, lifestyle, and landscape within the county's borders. In many ways, the county has been an exemplar for other agricultural counties within California as they grapple with development issues. Through its general plan, its zoning ordinances, and the project permitting, Sutter County has demonstrated a keen awareness that its own agricultural resources and heritage are irreplaceable and has responded to development challenges with deliberation and discipline. It is much due to this commitment and the vision that Sutter County has retained, a continuity of agricultural character and is noteworthy well beyond the regional level for its tremendously vibrant and productive farm and ranch landscape. Farm Bureau hopes that this board considers the appeal of the project within the context and articulates the following concerns. One, impact on county roads and traffic. Agricultural operations involve the use of heavy machinery and livestock movement, both of which require safe and reliable road access. The current infrastructure of our county roads, including Michael Road in this case, is not designed to handle the increased traffic that developments such as event centers would generate. Without appropriate mitigation, increased vehicular load can lead to quicker deterioration of road services, necessitating frequently and costly repairs. This would not only be a financial burden on the county, but it's also a potential hazard for daily commuters, including our farmers who rely on these roads for their livelihood. Two, emergency services. Emergency services in our county are already operating under significant strain, and the addition of an event center would exasperate this issue in a local area. The influx of visitors for events could lead to an increased number of emergencies, stretching our already limited resources. Furthermore, the location of the event center in a rural area will lead, may lead, to delayed response times in case of accidents or medical emergencies, putting both visitors and residents at risk. Three, interference with surrounding agricultural operations. Farming activities often involve the use of pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers, which are strictly regulated to prevent harm to neighboring properties. The presence of a nearby event center would likely lead to conflict and complaints from visitors unfamiliar with agricultural practices, potentially leading to costly legal battles and restrictions on farming operations. Four, saturation with existing recreation event centers. We know also that there is already two existing recreation event centers within three miles of the location. We think the county should reconsider the project in light of existing facilities in the area that serve the same potential purpose. Farm Bureau appreciates the board's consideration of the foregoing in the appeal to be heard on May 28 and looks forward to addressing the board at the hearing on the subject.
The first public speaker is Dennis Michael.
Hi, I'm Dennis Michael, a Sutter County farmer from Nicholas. I live on Michael Road with my wife and four children. However it got to this point, it blows my mind for several reasons. There are 26 conditions of approval within the mitigation report. That's right, 26. The safety and legal issues that come with this project are overwhelming. Let's start with the FEMA requirements. The Flood Insurance Rate Map, Chapter 1780 Flood Plane Management, provides guidance, and the county should use it in relation to construction at 3102 Michael Road. This property has a house on it that was built unpermitted at ground level. Within FEMA guidelines, the house should be removed or elevated to the flood insurance rate map. Through information received by opposition's filing of a PRA, permits have been pulled for the five additional ag buildings but have not been inspected for a final approval by the county. Condition of approval number 12 clearly states all building and structures on the property must be up to county code and finalized prior to the first event being held. Will they meet FEMA requirements? Even if the applicant gets parcel up to FEMA and county building requirements, how is the applicant going to address the safety of the farmers, traffic, and parking? Conditions of approval number seven, site has an unpermitted septic system. No onsite water or bathroom facilities are to be used for any event until brought up to code. How will this be monitored? If the board approves this today, this will set a new precedent of build whatever you want, and the county or elected officials will work with you when you are done with the construction to make it all legal. Under the Constitution of Legal Rights and Protection, I don't see how the county can stop someone going forward on illegal builds. What's good for one should be good for all. The lack of understanding for agriculture on a one-lane, dead-end county road is unbelievable. Exhibit one illustrates how narrow this road really is. By approving this today, the board is not just putting myself and other farmers in harm's way, but all of our employees, community, as well as the applicant's guest. The applicant's attorney wants to say, and the county wants to say, that there's only 99 people or less. But what's not being said is in the applicant application has other options to hold larger gatherings if approved by the county. Let's be honest, one phone call to the county and by an assemblyman who's the applicant's attorney, and they're going to approve it every time. Based on communications regarding the Sutter County budget, Sutter County doesn't have the means or staff to monitor one more event center primarily used by non-residents of the county. What does the county get in returns besides a whole lot of liability and a whole lot of citizens unhappy? People love our rural communities. Why are we trying to change that for non-Sutter County residents? Nothing about this project is safe for our farming community. I would also like to thank the Yuba-Sutter Farm Bureau for their letter of support in opposing this project. I'm strongly opposed to this project, and I urge you to reverse the Planning Commission's decision. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Susan Datto.
I drew some maps. They're also up there. Hi, my name is Susan Datto. I'm another one of the many residents who live on the county-maintained Markham Road, the only road from which the proposed event venue on Michael Road can be accessed. Please look at this exhibit number three. I think that's four. There is no direct access to Michael Road from either Highway 70 or 99. Highway 70 is in yellow, and 99 is in green. All traffic to the venue will be using Markham Road. Yet the Planning Commission's staff only assess traffic mitigation of Michael Road, a dead-end, 20-foot-wide road with no striping or shoulders. Here are some points that are apparently not considered by the Planning Commission but are of utmost importance to the community when considering this proposed project. According to the mitigation report, the applicant envisions all traffic to flow from the venue from Sacramento to the frontage road to get to the venue. I live on Markham Road here, she can show you, and GPS routes me to Highway 99, which is the green, because 99 is the most fuel-efficient with no overpass to traverse. Distracted drivers miss exits, splits, and turnoffs. So to envision one road to the proposed venue is not realistic. Are no guests ever coming from the north? Yuba County guests and vendors will use 70 South and exit at Nicholas Avenue. The report states that food vendors will come from Sutter County. Sutter County residents, guests, or vendors will come down Highway 99 South and could exit at Nicholas or turn left on 99 on power line to get to Markham. Please turn to exhibit four. Yuba and Sutter guests exiting at Nicholas will travel through these residential and commercial zones. Guests will drive past approximately 34 residences and five businesses and two other venues. The church tavern, paintball venue, Lake Mindon, and cemetery all bring in the most traffic to Nicholas and Markham Roads on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, the same days the proposed venue wishes to operate. Mass held Saturday evening and Sundays. Children cross Markham Road to get to the church hall for catechism on Sundays. Unfamiliar visitors driving through Nicholas are a threat to the safety of our children, especially since no speed limit signs or crosswalks are present on Markham Road. The entrance to Lake Mindon is at an angle to Markham Road. Motorhome and trailers driven by Lake Mindon guests frequently pull out onto Markham to be able to see what's coming from the right, and Nicholas evens are aware of this and slow down, whereas guests unfamiliar with Markham Road will not. Residents already deal with Lake Mindon guests who are unfamiliar with our rural roads. Do we need more unfamiliar guests? If the power line road exit is chosen, guests will turn left off Highway 99 onto Power Line Road, which you've heard about from me before, a county road needing maintenance with crumbling shoulders and several shoulder washouts. Once past the Lake Mindon entrance, guests will immediately come upon a blind curve. Farm equipment takes up the whole width of the road, and residents have had close calls on the curve. Next guest will cross the aging bridge. Okay, I would just like to thank all the county people that came down and talked to us, and I urge you to please overturn the Planning Commission's ruling. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sandra Gilbert.
I don't think I need them. Okay. It appears the Sutter County Planning Commission has been hasty in its review of the proposed venue as witnessed by their recent decision to grant approval of this project without careful attention to the 26 county building permit mandates, including safety issues, FEMA, and right-to-farm ordinances. Landowners directly affected were neither notified by mail of the application in advance nor were they asked for input, valuable input. The manner of county review appears lacking important details in determining all adverse effects and impacts. Furthermore, the appearance of favoritism towards the applicant would benefit from legal review by the county. If the decision is not reversed, can the granting of the permit be easily defended by the county in a court of law? Or rather, might this open the door to costly lawsuits from more than one source? One possibility for a lawsuit directly related to a case occurring in Yolo County right now over the previous granting of a Yolo County permit for a similar venue there is proceeding with considerable expense to the county. Present Sutter County supervisors have accomplished an exemplary task of keeping our budget balanced and lean, both in good times and in recent difficult times. And the board has maintained the trust of our citizens and businesses. Other northern California counties are facing bankruptcy. County officials must actively... All county officials must actively interact with all Sutter County citizens and be held to the highest level of trust. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Claudette Michael.
Hi, I am Claudette Michael from Markham Road in Nicholas, California. The applicant, after the Planning Commission's decision to approve this project, approached us to submit a wish list of our concerns. When asked, we thought it was a little awkward, but then said, you know what? Let's use this opportunity to try and gain trust and their true intent with the project. Twelve items were submitted, most of which we knew the applicant would agree to due to county code. However, four items were intentionally inserted to test the intent and trust. They failed the test. Number one, we asked the applicant to provide me with a copy of the site's event management plan, site plan, traffic plan, control plan, and security plan, all documents we have heard about in past meetings. Applicant was non-agreeable. Applicant stated there are public comments and would be accessible through the county. I requested documents from the county, and no plans have been submitted to date as number 14 of the 26 conditions for approval states that plans should be submitted prior to the first event. I don't understand how the project can be approved by the Planning Commission and appealed to the Board of Supervisors without information of what the applicant's emergency and safety plans are. Number two, no request will be made to the county to expand the size of the event site beyond 1.5 acres. Applicant was non-agreeable, citing there may be need for additional landscaping, et cetera. Number three, no more than 50 vehicles will be parked on the site for any one event. Applicant was not agreeable to this, citing all parking will be on-site, not on a road. Not agreeing to no more than 50 vehicles is a violation of the mitigation report, which states 110 ADT for Michael Road or approximately 45 vehicles. Number four, this is a tough one. The administrative use permit is perpetual with the land. So we requested that this administrative permit be for the sole use of the applicant and will not run perpetual with the land. Applicant was non-agreeable to this request. These four items show applicants' plans to keep all expansion options open. And if they sell the land, the permit runs with the land and its new owners. We are opposed to this project as it is presented today and to any future expansion and/or new owners purchasing the land with a county-approved commercial use administrative permit attached. There are so many unknowns and untruths that we have been exposed to in this project to be approved as presented. Please, we urge you to reverse the Planning Commission's decision to approve this project. Thank you.
Our next public comment card is from Donna Rolofs.
I am Donna Rolofs, and I reside on Markham Road, the only access road to Michael Road. We are concerned with response time for emergency services. The East Nicholas Fire Department is a volunteer department that depends on its local residents to assist with 911 calls. The proposed project will add additional strain to a minimally-staffed department. The same is said of the Sheriff's Service in the South Sutter area. Keep in mind, the mitigation report is based on 99 guests. An emergency service mitigation report response to county staff was based on 99 guests. Please be aware that many of our volunteer firemen are local farmers getting off their tractors to assist with 911 calls. With approval of this permit, the county is allowing urban residents to socialize at a site with no building permits, no water, and no septic system. Nine of the 26 conditions of approval are safety-related. This area is in FEMA's Flood Zone A. Most recently, I experienced the Oroville Dam evacuation process. Not only was Highway 99 and 70 clogged for hours with people evacuating from the north, Markham Road was a stream of farm equipment moving to higher ground. The farmers parked their equipment on the Markham Road, Highway 70 overpass. Also evacuating was Lake Mindon and numerous RVs. But our number-one concern is the safety of community families. This farming community does not need more congestion, especially at the time of an emergency. Yes, flood scares are a way of life for us locals, but there is so many more emergencies that this proposed event site may experience: fires and highway chemical spills, California earthquakes. With the proposed event site containing 18,700 square feet of improvement in six non-permitted buildings, an active shooter, guest heart attack, we just don't have the county resources to support this project. When the proposed parking area across the front of the event site is full of parked vehicles, where and how will first responders ingress or egress on Michael Road, which is a one-way lane, dead-end road? The average length of a ladder fire truck is between 75 to 100 feet. How and when will this fire truck turn around? We question if there is enough room on Michael Road for multiple emergency vehicles to simultaneously pass each other at the same time. This project has an apparent disregard for impact on roadway safety. Emergency vehicle access and increased wear... Your phone is getting in my eyes. Today, Michael Road has no lighting, no painted lines, and roadside ditches, which many times of the year contain water. And from November to February, our area is prone to dense fog. All of these conditions are driving hazards for residents and guests and possibly the future liability for Sutter County.
Thank you, Donna. Next speaker?
Our next public speaker is Eric Rolofs.
Board members, I'm Eric Rolofs, fifth-generation farmer down in Nicholas. Been there all my life. In the projects that's proposed, we had a lawyer at the Planning Commission meeting, the developer. Well, now we have the county telling you there's no conflict. You've had numerous speakers here, 20 people in the audience, 25 people that I recognize. There's a problem. I think that's pretty plain to see. So we know who's telling the truth here. The applicant spinning his tail, no conflict. Most of the local community, we're a very small community. We've got over probably, well, in the two-mile radius of this project, I think everybody's here. here. So, spin. A special point of view, emphasis, or interpretation provided for the purpose of influencing opinion. I think I've made it clear who's spinning here and who's giving you the facts. You have citizens in the affected area expressing their conflict, while at the planning level, we have the applicant spinning his tail of no conflict. These citizens rely on you, the board, to represent their concerns. These citizens help pay for this building. We're all enjoying, help pay for the AC that we're all enjoying, help pay for the chairs we're all sitting in. We want your representation, please. At the planning level, the lawyer explained that his client was willing to compromise on all these lists of, what do we call them? I can't remember the name of the list. He had a 26 conditions, the list of conditions. As Claudette earlier spelled out to you, when it came time to put the pen to paper, no compromise, is completely unwilling. Once again, spin. No truth represented there. I'm condensing here because Claudette, you did a really good job of covering a lot of this. The applicant continues to represent that the events will only be 99 people, of which they have no adequate parking. But it clearly states in the conditions of approval, there's an out for this. It says with a phone call to the county, they can expand the number of people. Doesn't have a limit, just says, it says right there in the list of conditions. We'll call up the county, let them know we're having more people, and we have more people. Okay, that throws out everything. You're going to have more people, there's not adequate parking, there's not an adequate road. Everything that we're talking about that isn't adequate just multiplies. We ask that this rezoning doesn't go in perpetuity, but that was shot down. Members of the board, you've heard multiple concerns from multiple citizens. In two hours, we canvassed the area, and only two people were in favor of this project. I ask the board to reject this project. The members of the community ask you to reject this project, please.
Thank you, Eric. Next speaker.
Our next public speaker is Tim Keller.
My name's Tim Keller, and I'm here to speak on behalf of approval of this project. I've listened to all of the concerns, and I respect those concerns. A lot of the people I know personally, and I don't doubt their veracity, but as a practical matter, this is a venue that was specifically permitted with the agriculture element of the general plan, and the ag element was developed in coordination with Ag Focus Committee and the Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau. The restrictions that have been put into this project have been fully vetted by the planning commission and its staff. Every issue has been addressed, and there is no justification for not approving this project.
Any other speaker cards?
We have one more speaker card for this item, Stephanie Rosignol.
Hi, I'm Steph Rosignol, and I'm here to beg you to not approve this project. I won't bore you with the facts and details that people who live in the area are giving you, but go back and remember Walnut Avenue. Yes, community center was needed, but how did they do it? How many permits did they evade? Or how many things did they evade and not put in there at use? And this right here, all of these open-ended things, it's like giving a toddler the key to mommy's pantry where the cookies are, and you're going to expect him to follow the rules. Just so much sugar, just so many cookies. Don't touch, oh, the big adult drinks or anything else. That's not going to happen. You know this is going to be used and abused. The next thing you know, there's going to be a subdivision there. We know the south is growing, it's going to be exploding. I happen to know of a billion-dollar industry that if it's not in Sutter County, it will be within 15 miles of it. So I guess what I'm saying is we are rural agriculture's number one, and I'm willing to bet everything I have, including my Jeep, that everybody eats almost every day, and some people do it two or three times a day. And where are you going to get that food? It's not the Old Testament where you can get manna from heaven in the water. We know what Governor Nusseini's been doing with it, and they've been doing it for years. And as far as what goes in goes out, that's called sewer, that's a problem. And right now, if they want to have a party for their employees, they can get a special-use permit, just like you do for a parade. Maybe they just don't want the paperwork. Well, go pay a suit and get your permit. And you know darn well, it's not going to be just 12. It's going to be significantly more than that, impacting the agriculture, impacting the traffic. The first person that dies because they couldn't see around, the safety wasn't. We have, all of us have to pay for that liability. We're self-insured. All I can see is problems, and why should people be able to skirt the problems? And you know how it goes, you put one foot in the door. I've seen every cop show and all these other movies. You put a foot in the door, and you can walk right on in. What's the difference between this and Sutter County? Remember back in the days of the 90s, when everybody wanted a ranch head and the things were going unproliferated? It was ridiculous. I'm just asking for common sense. Just say no.
No more speaker cards, right? There's a request just to take a two-minute break, and then we'll come back. Just restroom break, meeting adjourned for a moment. Break's over with. Okay, we're bringing it back to the board for discussion. Who would like to start?
The chair, if I could. I'd like to just have Ravina, if you could address some of the comments that were made. There are some clarifications that I need, particularly Claudette. Everybody did a great job, but Claudette really nailed it down to four specific points, and it was very helpful. If you could go over her points for us briefly, but succinctly. She mentioned a copy of the security plan, site plans. What are the requirements for that?
So that was a condition of approval we added in that was required, the applicant was required to provide that prior to holding events on the site, but not necessarily prior to approval of the project. That's how the condition is currently drafted.
So that would be something that comes after the approval?
Correct, yes. It would be submitted and reviewed by our department prior to events.
Okay. And just for my own edification, in the 26 points that they've mentioned several times, is that a requirement of approval? And then if it is, why are we doing it after the approval?
It is a condition of approval, and these conditions of approval are required to be met within the timeline, which is 24 months. Otherwise, the administrative permit itself would be null and void, so it would expire if they do not comply with those.
Understood. Okay, so it can be met within 24 months even after approval, but if it's not met, the permit would be pulled, right? The administrative permit.
Correct. And they wouldn't necessarily be allowed to use the facility at all without meeting all of those conditions.
So they would be allowed, or they wouldn't be allowed?
It would not be allowed to use the facility without that.
Okay, without it. Okay, and then the next question I had on the above 1.5 acre, Claudette, can you repeat that? Sorry, the issue you had on the 1.5 acres. Sorry, my notes are, I can't even read them myself sometimes.
Thank you. No request shall be made to the county to expand the size of the event site beyond 1.5 acres. Of course, they were not agreeable to this.
Okay, so can you clarify for me what that means exactly?
Sure. So in the conditions of approval, we did indicate that any modifications to what is being approved as a part of this project would go through a re-review. So in case of minor modifications, it would require an administrative permit amendment, which is an application that would be submitted to the planning division and reviewed. So that includes any kind of expansion. If it's a large enough expansion that's being proposed, it may require a use permit, which would again go to a public hearing and require planning commission approval. If it's a smaller modification, and there's a threshold in the zoning code for that, a smaller modification, it could be reviewed at staff level.
Okay, thanks. And so, go ahead, supervisor.
Sorry, Dan. I was just curious, what's smaller mean? Like, what do you...
The zoning code has a threshold for the expansion, whether it's an increase in square footage. So we'd have to take a look at exactly what that is, but if it was determined by our department to be a minor modification based off of zoning code requirements, then it'd still be reviewed by our department. It would just be something we'd review at staff level versus another public hearing.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Ravina. That actually does make sense. On the vehicles, so no more than 50 vehicles. It's mentioned several times here that part of the conditions should be no more than 50. However, if they call the county, we would allow them to expand the project. Is it that simple of a phone call? Or just get clarification on that as well?
No. So the zoning code has a specific parking ratio that they're required to comply with for each use type. For a special events facility, that is one parking stall per two and a half guests, which is the minimum that is required. And that was the 40 parking stalls is what it calculates out to be, given the 99 guests. And then one additional parking space per employee that would be working at the site. So they provided that extra five there, which is why they're showing 45 parking stalls on-site. If they were to add more parking, that's something that would require potentially administrative permit amendment or another type of review.
Thank you. And then particularly if an event, let's say, has 100 more people or something, how would that be handled? Let's say...
Right. So if they increase any guests beyond 99, it would require approval of a use permit. So that would be another application they would have to submit. And they would go through the whole review process again, get routed to all the departments and for review.
And then just, so I understand, is there a consequence if they violate that term? Like, let's say, one time they get 50 guests over, and do we pull the permit? Do we fine them? I'm just curious. I don't even know. I have no idea how that works.
Code enforcement would probably take a look at that. I'm not sure it'd be based off of our director and what they determine to how they want to address that.
Okay. Neil, did you want to address that one issue?
Good afternoon. In light of, obviously, the attention that this application, this site, has garnered, that should the event be permitted and approved, and should it be operated, and then if our department were to receive a report of some violation of the conditions, then subsequently, our code enforcement staff would investigate it. There could be a notice of violation issued if we determined that there was a violation. The process then, it goes to a public hearing, I'm sorry, an administrative hearing with an independent hearing officer, and then depending on the outcome of that, subsequent action could be taken after that. I guess I'll explain that certainly in the past, that this is an administrative permit, and our department has a responsibility to certainly enforce the conditions of approval on permits, both administrative permits and use permits. And I think your board is aware that our department in the past has brought use permits before your board for consideration to be revoked. So a one-time approval does not guarantee that it can operate in perpetuity without consequence, just for the public's information as your own.
And that would be mostly complaint-driven, Neil?
Yes, most definitely. So our code enforcement program is complaint-driven. We do have an operation where staff does visit sites from time to time for various reasons. Certainly, the conditions of approval that are listed, those actually have to be signed off by staff at the facility, whatever type of facility is, but staff actually goes to it and personally verifies it.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. And the last one from Claudette, but I have a couple more real quickies. The administrative use permit runs with the property, right? Is that an ordinance that we have or some kind of a government code, or how does that work?
Right. So in the county's ordinance code, and county council could correct me, but yes, it's allowed to run with the land, so it's subject to the approval of the land. Additionally, the conditions of approval also run with the approved venue, whatever that is and whatever the permit and those conditions are. Those conditions run with it as well. And so subsequent, the ordinance also contains language for enforcement of any type of violations of those conditions.
But it does run with the land?
Yes, it does. And that's...
That's just the way we have it set up, and it's been like that for...
And I think it's fairly standard in most California jurisdictions.
Okay. And then two additional questions. It was mentioned in the, from the planning commission, that they found minimal impact to traffic. Can you explain why they...
Sure, so I can explain, so I understand that Markham Road is the primary county road to get to Michael Road. I myself have personally visited the site, and I've checked some of the data, and I reviewed the concerns of residents that have come in regarding the bridge that's on Markham Road, the traffic volumes on Markham Road, the speeding on traffic on Markham Road. And one, I think the county has put up, there is some existing signage. Should there be, I guess, other traffic issues that arise because of, you know, should the permit be approved by your board? If there was additional signage that was needed, then we could place that. Out of the signage, we have a county road sign on Michael Road that says, "Not a Through Road." So essentially, you know, all essentially visitors to that roadway are going to know that it does not extend and continue all the way. But the, an actual, a county two-lane road can handle a couple thousand vehicles a day. Our department provides traffic counts on a regular basis for traffic studies for the bridge. So our most recent study on this segment was in 2021, late 2021. The traffic volume was a little bit less than 200 cars a day, and the average speed, well, I'll say the speed that, the 85th percentile speed, which is the speed, which speed limits are set in California, was 54 miles an hour. The road segment in question has an unposted speed limit, which in the county's ordinance code means that the speed limit is 55 miles per hour. We've offered to some correspondence with some of the residents that we were going to do a follow-up traffic study on the segment of Markham Road, so that if there needed to be additional signage, even going so far as posting the speed limit of 55 miles per hour, just to kind of clarify that for visitors to the site. But, I mean, the roadway in itself, I think, you know, there are various intersections, and should there be agricultural operations or the localized traffic going to and from the venue, there are certainly intersections, and so there may be a backup of traffic. But that, within traffic engineering, that's all considered acceptable, that it's, and we can go into, you know, a longer discussion as to how long that traffic backup might be and stuff, but having a traffic backup does not correspond to an unsafe roadway. And I think another thing that I could add is that increased traffic volume, it's been proven by FHWA, actually lowers speed on, when you have traffic going in opposing directions, the more traffic you have actually causes people to drive slower, especially when you have narrower lanes, for example, on Markham Road, because obviously people are concerned about, you know, obviously oncoming traffic, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then just finally, I had a question regarding, several citizens brought up the concern of the impact to emergency services. Can you give us a synopsis of the Planning Commission's thinking on emergency services, how it wouldn't be so impacted, or?
I probably should let the county fire department maybe respond to concerns about the, you know, emergency services safety to the state.
Sure, that would be great, thank you.
I went out and visited the site as well, Richard Epperson, Battalion Chief for Sutter County. And the access into the property was, we can turn a fire engine around, we can also have at least two ambulances that would go side by side into the property. There was also a secondary access around the parking lot structure, or the parking lot area in which they were proposed to park, and that they wouldn't have anybody inside of the gate parking there, which would allow us full access for the fire trucks and for an ambulance as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's the final questions I have, I guess. Well, actually, one more Ravina, if you don't mind, this on the sewer and water. So will all of that will be required, I'm certain, before the site can be actually officially approved, right? Because there were concerns about the buildings not being permitted, and then also sewer water.
Right, so the onsite well and septic is not proposed to be used for the facility. They are proposing to provide portable restrooms, which have their own, you know, waste disposal system, and that's listed as condition seven on here. And the buildings themselves are not proposed to be used for the venue, so they wouldn't be connected to any septic or well.
Understood, okay, thank you for that, appreciate it. Through the chair. I'm sorry, Neil, I'm sorry to bring you back. I think Supervisor Flores pretty much asked everything that I was one to ask, but if we could go back to talking about the increase in square footage of the one and a half acres, and what exactly that means, and if we don't have some sort of set limit on that, is there, I mean, maybe we should go back and rewrite that and make an amendment to our code enforcement ordinance? Or what are your thoughts there?
So I guess, just to make sure I clarify, so the, this project is proposing to use about 1.5 acres of the site. So in our ordinance code, the zoning code, that should the applicant, following, if the project were approved, if they wanted to go and increase the size of the facility. So 20% essentially is the threshold. So if it was less than a 20% increase in, in this case, land area, because it's not pertaining to building usage, then if it was less than 20 square, less than 20%, then that would be called a minor administrative permit amendment. And that has a fee, and that has a review. Administrative permits, just to clarify, are typically reviewed at the department level, and essentially ultimately by me. And then my finding is, can be essentially appealed or brought to the Planning Commission for review and consideration. If they wanted to do an expansion greater than 20%, and still, but most of the other conditions all still remain the same, then it would still, then it would be a major administrative permit amendment. If they wanted to do more as far as significantly more land acreage, significantly more, like, if you go above 99 visitors, then it becomes, our zoning code requires a use permit. So 99 and below is an administrative permit, 100 and above is a use permit.
Okay, so it's not something where they can just every year go 20% of what the new square footage is? Okay, I just.
No, and all that would be, you know, taken into consideration because, and obviously the impacts would be analyzed and reviewed and considered.
Okay, thank you.
One thing is housekeeping. I thought I closed the public hearing, but perhaps not, so public hearing is closed. Mike, did you have something you wanted?
Through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to thank Supervisor Flores as well for bringing up those questions, or getting clarity to the concerns that the members of the public have brought up today. I want to also thank Mr. Kellner, he mentioned that every issue had been addressed, and staff, Ravina did a great job, and Neil, thank you, is for addressing all the issues that had been brought up, including the ones that were submitted through a letter with Farm Bureau. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion.
Can we finish the discussion first, Mike? I don't think everybody's had a chance. Do you have anything you want to bring up, Mike? I did.
Yeah, no, I.
Right, but I was wanting to get the question done first.
All right, I want to thank the, well, through the chair. First, I want to thank the applicant for meeting with me Thursday. I went down there and spent time down there Thursday, and then I went back Friday, spent time down there Friday. I want to thank Fire Chief, interim Fire Chief, Richard Epperson for meeting me down there Thursday. Did a lot of traveling around the countryside over there. And for those of you wondering, how many outdoor event centers? Because I heard quite a few, I heard a golf course, and I heard something else. Those are not permitted outdoor event centers. There legally cannot be a wedding or an outdoor party there. Those places are 2121 Catlet Road and Butte Star Ranch in Sutter. And when I look at things, I look at the safety aspect of it, and I look at where it's at. It was imperative to me to drive up and down the road to see how safe, to see what this one-lane road looked like, and to make sure our Fire Chief felt comfortable in pulling up in case of a disaster, in case, God forbid, a heart attack, someone hit their head, something. And when we drove around, we looked at the parking and so forth, that checked that off for me. There was plenty of parking, plenty of emergency in and out. I was very comfortable with that. As a matter of fact, we just voted on Butte Star Ranch earlier last year, and there's between 10 to 300 or 400 at that event center. And when it comes to ag, there's not one group of board members that doesn't support ag as much as this group up here. And that's, that's to go without question. But the biggest thing is, does this place foot the bill? Is it a right spot? There's nothing in here that I could, how should I say, there's, there's not enough in here to make me question it. And that's with looking at everything and driving it, and talking with the Fire Chief, and looking at the other existing facilities that are right off 99, the Catlet Hall Building, Butte Star Ranch off of Southview Road in Sutter. And I know I've had a few phone calls, and people say, "Mike, you need to vote this down because of this and that." And I, trust me, I, I would love to, to support you in this, I just, I cannot, because there's just, there's not enough here that, for me to, to vote against this project. It checks the safety. The fact that this permit can be revoked if the applicant doesn't comply with all the conditions of approval, or any extra conditions, that's huge to me. They're not allowed to use the project, the facility without any, all the conditions met, that's huge. This, there's, the fact that I met with the owner of the property right next to it, who's fully in support of this as well, and the fact that the applicant owns the orchard behind them, so they know when they will be spraying, that was the big holdup for me, is who owns that property right there behind you. I asked the applicant, he said, "Well, I own that." I said, "Okay, well, that makes the check off for me, because they're not spraying." If this was the other way around, if this was a really small road there, and I didn't feel there was enough emergency access, it would be easy to vote no on this. I just cannot vote no in my conscience to what this thing, with all the safety and and stuff that this has been met. And I'm very sorry about that, but I wish I could support you guys, but I cannot with this.
I'd just like to say a couple things. First of all, I want the applicants that requested the appeal and the re-project of the project to get their $1,000 back, because I don't think this, I think this is a very concerning project for the county. It's supposed, that $1,000 fee is supposed to make sure that we don't have every Tom, Dick, and Harry complain about everything, and just doesn't cost them anything. But this project, I think, has some real concerns to me, and so I want the $1,000 back. First of all, then the first issue is, the entire project's in a FEMA floodplain. And so Neil, I want to go back to the structures. So all those structures will be permitted prior to the applicant using the facility.
Oh, it's, there's currently six ag-related structures on the building that were built by the, it's my understanding, by the previous landowner without permits.
Right.
So then the new property owner took over the property and has submitted the, yeah, the engineered plans for five of the six buildings. And then there is a sixth building that includes some type of a quasi-residence, and that building either has to meet FEMA standards that would be in place at the time of construction, or it has to be removed. And the county has provided that notice to the property owner, and they're aware of that. The other five buildings, like I say, are being permitted as ag buildings. It's our understanding they're ag-related storage buildings. Should they need a flood variance from, or an ag variance for, for the FEMA requirements, then they may be required to install flood vents and the other mechanisms to wet-proof the building.
So Neil, the residential structure will have to be removed because it's not permitted, and we can't approve a FEMA residential in the floodplain?
Right, so if the property owner and their engineering team are not able to do the required items to comply with the FEMA standards, then the structure would have to be removed.
And the other, one other concern I have is, East Stinkles Fire Department is a totally volunteer department. And if they're the number one responder, their station is, I would say, as a crow flies, maybe two miles from this facility. Of course, you'd have to go around to get there, but, so if there's a vehicle accident, a heart attack, a stroke, whatever, medical aid, fire, any kind of rescue call whatsoever, they would have to respond to this and to this call. And that's concerning, because it adds to their workload that they are already stressed and stretched. And these volunteer departments, you know, they do a great job, but it's not an easy task to get enough volunteers who are highly qualified and to show up at every call. The next question I have is, is, so Neil, let's say that these guys park on the side of the road, or there's more than 100 people there, or more than 50 cars there. Who are the citizens going to call on a Friday afternoon when they do that, or Saturday morning, day, whatever?
So, one, they could call the sheriff's office. Two, they would be able to, I'll say with my staff, depending on the time of day, after hours, we have an email for code enforcement that goes to a number of people in our department, and then it could be investigated, you know, follow-up. If someone were to take photos and submit those to our department, like I said, our code enforcement staff would investigate it, could issue a notice of violation, which then would lead to an administrative hearing with an independent hearing officer, so that it could be, you know, investigated and prosecuted essentially. And then should those findings, you know, depending on the outcome of the hearing, you know, myself, my staff could be in front of your board to discuss the administrative permit and further action.
Okay. Okay, any other question?
Through the chair. Through the chair?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to deny the appeal.
Through the chair one more time, sorry. I just want to, I agree with you, that's the one thing that when we talked Friday was all about the unpermitted buildings and so forth, and that's why Neil and I met Friday, discussed that, and to make sure we remedy that, and they get those updated, once again. So I do agree with you on that.
What about?
I still have a motion on the floor.
Do we have a second?
Through the chair. I just want to say, I will second the motion, and I generally always agree with the Farm Bureau, and Supervisor Conant and I are both former board members. But when we usually deny these type of projects, they're very small acreage, and they don't grow any ag commodities of their own, and we're always concerned about overdrift. And that's always why we usually will deny that and side with the Farm Bureau. This, however, is in the middle of 144 acres. It's all agriculture, and I don't see any effect, you know, or emergency, you know, situations that could be harmful, as they've all recommended, and so I second the motion.
There's a motion and second, I call for the question.
Any question?
Call for the question, the motion has been moved and seconded. Call for the question.
Okay.
Excuse me, just for clarification, does the motion and the second also include the refund of the $1,000?
No.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Through the chair. I'd like to amend the motion to put in for the, give back the $1,000 for the.
But we called for the question, we can do a separate motion for that, right? Let's do a separate motion for that.
I guess we can bring it back and bring it.
Supervisor Baines called for the question.
And we council. Add that?
Hold on.
It would be a separate motion.
Yeah, we'll do it afterwards then, okay.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Okay, so we're going to vote twice on this, so we could bring around and vote for the appeal. I'm sorry, for the deposit of the appeal.
That would be a second motion that would occur after this, if that's what the board chose to do.
Right, because we already went through the process.
Okay, I vote yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
All right, so now I can call for a motion to approve?
Yes.
$1,000 appeal.
You have a motion?
I'd make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second? All in favor, roll call please.
Could I make a friendly amendment to that motion that he just made? Is it, okay. I'd like to add that it'd be required that some safety signage be put up on the road, roadways. Speed limit signage? Yeah. Yeah, well, it is, it's here. Yeah, well, it is, it's here too, so bear with us for a moment. Okay.
All right, I will, I'll re.
Go ahead, you can re.
I'll restate my motion. I'll make a motion to give back the appeal money and for signage on Markham.
There you go.
And all the roads that it's going to affect.
Supervisor McKelley, do you agree with the friendly amendment?
I do.
Supervisor McKelley.
Aye.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to public hearing number 13.
Public hearing to consider Project U-23-0020 Sutter Cemetery, a general plan amendment from agricultural rural community to public, and a rezone from agricultural to public district of 77.23 plus or minus acres located on the east side of Everett Road, west of Mallett Road, and north of the West Inseptor Canal in Sutter, California.
Okay, we'll take a two-minute break. Arwin, are you taking this one?
The project before you is a request for a general plan amendment from agriculture rural community, AGRC, to public P designation, and a rezone from agriculture AG to public P district for 77 acres in the rural community of Sutter. The site is located on the east side of Everett Road, west of Mallett Road, and north of the West Inseptor Canal. The site is currently zoned agriculture and is designated as agricultural rural community with a 2.5 acre minimum in the general plan. The surrounding area is primarily cemetery operations and residential uses to the south, agricultural land and residences to the north and west, and agricultural land to the east. The two subject parcels indicated by the outlined areas are currently being used as an orchard, although a portion of the orchard was removed around 2008 on the west side of the property. This area will be used as a first phase of the cemetery expansion area. In 1986, the planning commission evaluated and approved a use permit for cemetery use on these two parcels. The proposal was analyzed based on the future use of the site as a cemetery and anticipated that the property would need to be used for burial purposes sometime in the next 15 to 30 years. And until there is a need for additional burial ground area, the site would continue to be used for agricultural purposes. Although the applicant is currently requesting an amendment to red, excuse me, an amendment to redesignate the property from agriculture to public, the project site has already previously been evaluated and approved for cemetery use. To provide further consistency for the future cemetery with the underlying land use designations, the applicant is now requesting amendments to modify the general plan and zoning district land use designation for the site from agriculture to public. Staff has not received any opposition regarding this proposal. Staff believe the proposed rezone and general plan amendment are consistent with the general plan, promote the growth of the county in an orderly manner, and will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the area or to the general welfare of the county. Therefore, staff and the planning commission recommend the Board of Supervisors approve the project with the findings listed in the staff report and as shown in the related staff report and attachments. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Open the public hearing. Any public speaker cards? None. Any public wish to speak about the item? Seeing none.
Through the chair.
Close the public hearing.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Before I vote, I want to say we have the prettiest cemetery, I think, ever. We got the greatest guys. I mean, our cemetery is absolutely outstanding. You ever get a chance to go out there, it's beautiful. They've done a great job of keeping it up and so forth, so. Literally, but it's just beautiful. It's amazing, great job.
Okay, we have a motion by Carm. A second.
Supervisor McKelley.
Aye.
Supervisor Flores. Supervisor Zigamire.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The ordinance title reads as follows. An ordinance of the County of Sutter amending the zoning of certain parcels in the county.
Thank you. Okay. Moving along to item number 14, David Reed.
Receive a presentation on the Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture Programs and Activities.
Good afternoon, David. This is informational item number 14.
This right here advances it, and then this is a little spotlight if you can do
Hit the mic, the mic. There we go.
Hey, how about that? Good afternoon, Chairman Conant, members of the Board of Supervisors, staff, members of the public for staying in. I feel like I'm the comedic relief after all this serious business you've been doing, but we'll keep it light and quick and move things along. I'm David Reed, Executive Director of the Yuba Sutter Arts Council. We've been in existence since 1981. We are the official liaison for Sutter County as well as Yuba County to the California Arts Council. And I like to come before the Board of Supervisors at least once a year and just kind of give an update and let you all know what we've been up to. This is our current Board of Directors. I think all the supervisors, except for Supervisor McKelley, have actually served as our Sutter County representative on our board. We're required to have a representative from each county Board of Supervisors, as well as some other outstanding individuals in the community. This is the employee staff, Abby Sessina, many of you know from her years at Yuba City and Parks and Rec, myself, and Shante Arroyo, our arts and education and social media manager. We have a number of volunteers and some contract labor folks that come in and help. We support a number of local artists, well, any of them that come forward and ask for support, of course, but we have some folks that serve in varying capacities. This is our current roster, if you will, of artists representing pretty much, you know, every aspect of the arts, including our really nationally known and more and more internationally known Yuba Sutter poet laureate, young man named Marcelo Hernandez Castillo, who has really become a kind of a rock star and he's a native of Yuba City. So very proud of him and all that he's accomplished. Our basic mantra is to try to make folks, you know, think about or look at art and culture in a little different way and make it part of, you know, everyday existence. This is just a quick list of some of the many things we do in the community. I kind of differentiate between our retail programs and non-retail, if you will. Retail being our performances, theater, live music, art exhibitions, and then all the other services we kind of do behind the scenes. For example, we're under contract with the City of Live Oak to create additional murals. We'll be meeting with the interim city manager next week and moving that project forward. We're working with the City of Yuba City on a mural project in addition to the one we just completed, we'll show you a picture of, but to create some murals under the water tower as part of the Water Tower Park redevelopment program. Consulting with artists, city governments, other arts organizations, supporting any way we can in our arts and culture ecosystem in Yuba Sutter. We, I say we're both blessed and cursed to a minor extent to own a couple of facilities, one in each county. Of course, our home base is the Lee Burrows Center for the Arts in Marysville. That's still our official office space. And of course, the Sutter Theater, the Sutter Theater Center for the Arts, as we called it, it's more than just a movie theater. And then our rental space, the Kalakara Art Studio Complex just down the street at Walnut and Reeves. We have studio facilities that we rent out, and we also use one of the spaces to host our after-school arts education programs for students. Arts and Education is our biggest portfolio, if you will, of programs and events. Things like Poetry Out Loud, poetry recitation program for cash prizes for both Sutter and Yuba County High School students, Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, a national program, another student recognition program for those interested in creative writing and art in all their many forms. Not that everything has to be a competition, I kind of struggle with that, but hey, it's something else to put on a resume or a college application, even if you don't win, participate in some of these name-brand kind of programs. So it's, I think, an honorific that's worth supporting. I should point out, Scholastic, we're actually the Northern California affiliate for seven counties, so we go beyond our normal Yuba Sutter service area with that Scholastic program. We work with Yuba College on a variety of projects. Most recently, we helped create the new mural on the site of the theater building. If you haven't seen it, it's pretty spectacular. 2,000 square feet, and it's a beauty by Rebecca Wallace, who coincidentally, her piece was chosen, but she used to be a professor of art at the college. She now lives in Mendocino. Other youth programs, Sketchbook Club is the after-school arts program and free of charge to students. Center Stage Productions, that's our youth performing arts program under the direction of Corey Kersting, part of the Yuba City Unified School District, music and theater. Outstanding, I mean, really best-in-class youth performing arts opportunities for students. They'll be doing this summer, they're doing Frozen Junior and Newsies. So we're excited to be hosting those at the Sutter Theater Center for the Arts. You may have heard, we recently started, just this last year, a youth mariachi program in Yuba County. We hope we can get that over here in Yuba City Unified School District. We've got two, not elementarys, middle schools currently in the program, our Bogah and Yuba Gardens, and we hosted a couple of weeks ago, a kind of a year-end concert by the students. Got a great group of trained mariachi instructors now, so they're anxious to expand the program. Other programs, lots of live music, Jim Achilles, some of you may know, and his band Idle Fret. He's back in town. He was away in Oregon for a few years, came back, and he's already been playing all over town. We had him at our mural marathon recently. He's part of the Yuba Sutter Big Band Orchestra. He sings, he plays guitar, he plays, I mean, I don't know how many instruments, he's one of those guys. John Hadamea and his jazz band, we're hoping to get them back here in the fall, just as an example. Convergence Theater Company, that's kind of our house, community theater program, doing things a little different than the acting company, a little more controversial, things like The Laramie Project, a play called Roe that really took a deep dive into the whole Roe v. Wade situation, neither side being taken, just kind of explaining what went into that. So we're pretty proud of what they've accomplished. Excuse me, that's under the direction of Matt Demerit. Of course, his father was the theater educator at Faith Christian for many years. The Yuba Sutter Big Band I mentioned, that's currently under the direction of Deanna Wiseman, one of the great local music educators. We've done a lot with veterans over the years. We've done veteran ceramics programs, we did some bronze face casting, and then portraits of veterans where we photographed over 400 veterans and shared their stories of their time in service. We're getting ready to start veteran ceramics again. We lost our former educator, but we have a new one who's going to do a great job. We got some funding from Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health, so. Some of you know about the mural marathon we conducted a few weeks back, that's on the side of the Sutter Theater on Church Street. Five nationally known mural artists came together and in 48 hours created those five murals. There are information panels on both sides of the murals that explain, you know, the meaning, there were certain themes they had to address, which they did a wonderful job of doing. So that's become another attraction, I think, on Pluma Street, so pretty exciting. The mural on the bottom is on the wall adjacent to the Buddhist church in Marysville, another grant-funded project. The murals on top, actually, are the result of a mural of a grant received by our, excuse me, our Yuba Sutter Rotary Night Club. They applied and received the grant to pay the artists. We like to pay artists. People think, oh, I want an artist to come over to my house and paint a mural. Well, what's your budget, you know? Excuse me, I've been talking all day. Public art, of course, you know about the utility boxes, that was a Yuba City funded program, hope to do a few more of those. Traveling exhibitions, we work with the American Indian Education Office, had a wonderful Native American show, and then we host their student art show every year. Raj Cologne, excuse me, was a local artist who went on to live in New York, and now she's in Europe, and came here a couple of years ago and did a tremendous show. So some of those kind of outside programs, we'll try to bring in. Salt of the Earth is an original stage play based on a film from the 50s that deals with miners' rights as well as women's issues. It's an original stage play by Dr. Mark Flax, professor of sociology out at Yuba College. Larry and Joe were just here last week, two nationally known musicians. We caught them on tour between Berkeley and Sacramento, and they've been on NPR, and they've played at the Kennedy Center. It's kind of a fusion of Latin music and Appalachian bluegrass, so they call it Latin grass. Great show, tremendous performers. Phoenix Drum and Dance have been up from Sacramento several times, putting on Caribbean and African programs. The Arbogah Assembly Center, it's kind of using an artistic form or approach, if you will, to preserve local history. This was the site of temporary housing for Japanese-Americans in 1942 before the permanent internment camps were built, and that's out in South Yuba County. We've hosted a number of film festivals at the Sutter Theater, gives local filmmakers as well as student filmmakers a chance to kind of show their stuff. Lots of other community events. I must say, this was the previous year's Bandits and Bandanas, but Supervisor Flores donated his talent and asked him about Colorado Kool-Aid sometime, if you happen to know that Johnny Paycheck song, in El Paso. He and Tanya did a great job, really appreciate the support. Harvest the Arts out at Mr. Hires Farm, mariachi concerts, Rocky Horror Picture Show, just some of the things we've done. We raised a quarter million dollars for the Cotton Roster Bronze Statue Project. I hear it's in Yuba County, sitting out at Flying U Rodeo's grounds. It's in the warehouse there, and I'm hoping the City of Marysville can start pouring a base for it and get it on display before the rodeo, the statue's magnificent. So it'll be another real, I think, boon as far as local public art for people to see and enjoy. Lots of different grant programs that help fund what we do. Jump Starts is for at-risk, system-engaged youth. We go into the continuation schools like Feather River Academy, provide arts instruction, poetry, visual arts, guitar, a number of things that that program funds. The Outdoor Equity Program is a grant from California Parks and Rec Department where we take people on free trips like cross-country skiing. We went to Corey Park, the Adventure Park in Rockland last week, all paid for, charter bus, entry fees, lunch, the whole shoot and match. We add a little art component, we send along an art artist or art teacher, and they do a little art project or do some nature journaling, whatever they may enjoy doing. So Arts Exposure is our youth field trip program where we take busloads of kids to the Crocker Museum or Sacramento, in Sacramento, or over to San Francisco. We've even done one trip to Los Angeles to the Getty Museum. So that funding comes through and we're able to, I mean, we get kids to go to the Crocker, and they've never even been to Sacramento, let alone a art museum, so it's, I think, kind of meaningful. Something else we want to do more of, and that's re-granting, where we get some pots of money that are strict, we get an admin fee, but we're able to give away money to local arts groups and individual artists. So they've been funding a lot of these other activities that we're not directly involved in, so we're pretty proud of that. We're a membership-based organization, so any and all donations and support at any level are always appreciated. We just put some new stars on the sidewalk out in front of the Sutter Theater. If you've seen that, we've had some wonderful people that have contributed anywhere from, well, even Sweat Equity, we got a couple of folks that have just done so much, we gave them a star, but usually it's a $5,000 or $10,000 donation. So we were able to justify busting out some concrete and putting in some new stars, so. And just ask you to keep in mind that art and culture is an important part of economic development. Some of the numbers I've thrown at you show some of that additional money coming into the community. We're not talking millions yet, but maybe someday, but it's certainly something that needs to be considered in planning going forward. I'll mention one other thing, if I may. Wednesday, tomorrow, gosh, it's here, we're hosting with the Chamber of Commerce a business after-hours at the Sutter Theater, 5:30. We'll have refreshments and the whole, it's a business after-hours kind of event, and the whole point is to kind of, what's the word, no champagne bottles, christen. Christen the mural display and then also to recognize our major star donors, so. That's it, any questions?
Thank you, David.
All right.
Thank you for all you do. I always, the best art I see all the time is every time we cross and see one of your utility boxes that are painted differently, and they're all over town, all over all the towns.
That was a good one.
I think it's pretty incredible.
Thanks so much.
Really cool. Thank you.
Through the chair. Oh, you have a speaker card.
Oh, you have a speaker card.
Oh, there is, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Liz Cervantes.
We never have a speaker card on either.
Well, aren't the arts wonderful? We all can agree that we love them, but he left some, left a couple out that I would like to bring to your attention, and I'd like his explanation on one of them. Don't know if anybody caught this, but on June 15th at 7:00 PM, the event at Yuba Sutter Arts Council is drag, drinks, and dessert. Have you heard about it? Well, let me tell you what it's all about. Drag comes to town for a Yuba Sutter first. Matt, I can tell by the look on your face you had no idea. Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture and Tri-County Diversity are collaborating to bring the art of drag to Yuba Sutter. Enjoy the bombastic dance stylings of various queens as they perform to popular and iconic tunes. Your ticket includes free dessert, too. Bonus, can only imagine what that looks like. 21-plus and older for this event. Get your tickets at yubasutterarts.org or call 742-ARTS. So, I called that phone number, and I happened to get Abby Sessina, and I asked her, how much are the tickets for this event? And she said, it's been canceled. And I said, really? How come? Well, shock of all shocks, they couldn't find a drag troupe to come up to Sutter County. If I was a drag, in a drag group, I wouldn't want to come up to Sutter County either. Try that in a small town. Now, it's canceled, but that was the reason. And the reason that I wanted to hear was because this isn't the climate for that. The summer stroll is coinciding at the same time with the children's activity section directly across the street. Now, thank God, this one's been canceled, but when is the next one coming? You know, if people want to do bombastic dance stylings, which I went to Christian School, that is a demonic word, demonic, okay? And it's not art. Bombastic drag queens, dance stylings to popular and iconic tunes, that is sick. Supervisor McKelley, you gonna take your little girl to see something like that? I don't think so. I'm telling you, don't try that in a small town, Mr. Reed. We're gonna fight you every step of the way on those kind of things.
Finally, I've done something controversial. Thank you, Ms. Cervantes. I assume we will not engage in a public debate on the matter, but truly, it has been canceled. You found that in the Explore Yuba Sutter document, which lists the calendar of events. You know, you do 1,000 things, and only one stands out. We hope you'll come to some of the other events you find acceptable for the community, but in the meantime, you know, we'll see how it goes. But it has been canceled, so you were given correct information. June is Pride Month, and we do work closely with Tri-County Diversity. Everybody here know about Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health Support of Tri-County Diversity? You might look that up and...
We've got no problem with diversity.
Really? Yeah? Good, good, good. Through the chair. All right.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
There shouldn't be no back and forth here.
Right, thank you. Sorry about that. Moment of weakness on my part.
Okay. Moving on. Thank you, David. I guess that concludes your report.
Right.
Moving along, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Approval to immediately implement a hiring freeze for all county departments.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisor, Steve Smith, County Administrator. So, over the past year, we've had a soft freeze on hiring for the county, meaning we were holding positions that would result in general fund savings open. Traditionally, this year, an additional two pay periods. However, there are positions that we fill immediately when they're safety-related. This would just enable me and my office and HR to look at every position that comes open and discuss with department heads on their plans for filling the position, if promotions from within, backfilling the positions. It just provides a little control so that we can go through and analyze each position one by one. Department heads have been very supportive thus far because we try not to hold them up, but just have good discussions on this. We know we're gonna have tough budget years in the next several years, as indicated, the indications show from the state's budget. So, other than that, it asks for the county administrator-designee to be able to approve those exceptions, and then I'll present a consolidated report on various vacant positions and the savings therein at the budget presentation at our next meeting, where the recommended budget will be presented.
Any speaker cards?
Yes, we have two speaker cards on this item. The first public speaker is Stephanie Rosinio. The next public comment card is Liz Cervantes.
Liz?
Steve, can you tell me how long the hiring freeze is? The timeframe of the hiring freeze?
It's in place until lifted by supervisors. So, until we would bring something back or they request it to be ended.
So, I can't go back and forth with them. Do we have anything? Because I was told it was two weeks. Is that just total malarkey, two weeks for the hiring freeze?
Yeah. As I mentioned during, just when I was speaking, we were holding positions vacant for two pay periods throughout the last fiscal year, for the most part, unless they're critical public safety positions. But we're looking at not having necessarily that for those vacancies, but each vacancy would come and be considered on its own merit.
Well, there goes my joke about the two weeks. I thought maybe you were consulting Dr. Lou in flattening the curve in two weeks. I think we need to flatten the County of Sutter in their hiring freeze and make it two years. Hopefully, you guys, you use the common sense, we're broke, we're still hiring, filling all these positions. You know, I don't know if anybody else that's left in this room realizes that when these supervisors come to a meeting, they are given staff notes and staff, you know, the recommendations, they've been over it. Anybody want to take a guess? I got a prize for whoever gets the right number of how many pages are in that staff report. Want to take a guess, anybody? How about 731? Holy smokes. That is a huge waste right there. Now, this has been a very exciting meeting, and I do believe that I have caught myself up. I apologize. I want you to recognize that I did not use not one word of profanity, which I'm working on. Thank you. See everyone at the next Tuesday.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards? None? Is there any comment, questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
To the chair.
Yes.
Move to approve.
You have a motion by Carm?
Second.
Second by Dan. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay. Fall off of reports and announcements and condolences. Would you like to start, Dan?
Sure, I'll start. Just one item I just want to mention, Liz actually mentioned it, but June 15th is our summer stroll on downtown Pluma Street. Starts at 3:00 in the afternoon, and we'd love to have everybody join us. It's a lot of fun, so, thank you.
Carm?
Sure, I'd like to start out by welcoming Chief Daley. Welcome aboard. I'd make a request that we actually recognize Zach Hamel from the county right at an upcoming meeting. Do a couple of letters of sympathy and condolences to go out to. One goes to, sorry, Nancy Santana for the passing of her father, William Prater. And I'd like to also have a letter of sympathy and condolences go out to Elizabeth Hurley for the passing of her husband, Edward H. Hurley. And that's it for right now.
Yep, through the chair. Thank you. I know in talking to Stephanie this morning, I know you guys mentioned the passing of Bill Filter at the last meeting, but I'd like to request that we have some new letters signed with me added to that. The Filter family were very, very close friends of ours for generations and lived just down the street, and unfortunately, my mother had to see the ambulance driving him away. And, you know, we have been very close with the entire Filter family for many, many years, and so it was a big loss. And instead of just the one letter to the family, I'd like to make sure that we get a letter to his wife, Jackie, and his son and daughter, Bill and Julie. So, if we could just re-sign those, maybe next week, so, thank you. That's all I have.
I think, is your microphone off?
Sorry. God, I thought it was on. Okay. I'd like to letter, Mike asked me to do a letter of request for a plaque for Ryan Robinson in recognition of his retirement from Sutter. Aye. And I would like to request a plaque for Nick Hendricks for his dedication of coaching and teaching of local youth sports. Next, I would like to request certificate of residence for Berry School Students Award Assembly I'll be going to. And also, I'd like to thank the Calvary Temple. I don't know how many people got to go last week, yesterday and the day before, to their Grateful Nation Remember Their Memorial Day Celebration for remembering the veterans. I guess you were there, Carm? And I was there Sunday morning or afternoon. And great program, great speakers. They do it every year. It's an incredible program they put on, and I think it's a pretty incredible program they do. And then, and last, I'd like to close in memory of Ken Kesterson for his passing, retired at Forest, I believe 93 years old. So, we're looking for a motion.
Through the chair. I'm sorry, I forgot one quick thing. Just to mention, anybody, there's still some tickets available for June 1st for the fundraiser dinner for the Yuba Sutter Stand Down for veterans, so just want to put that out there. So, that's June 1st. Thank you. Move to approve the recommended section of requests, please.
Motion, second. Roll call.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Oh, do we have a closed session yet?
Closed session is Conference with Labor Negotiators, Gina Roland and Veronica Baumgartner, Sutter County Deputy Sheriff's Association, and Sutter County Peace Officers Association, pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57.6.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for coming.